It is just after four o'clock on Tuesday, March 2nd, 2021. I'm going to go ahead and call this work session of the Anchorage School Board to order. In the temporary boardroom, we have myself, Alisa Vaquellis, Board Member Donley, Board Member Hildy, and Board Member Bellamy in person. Woo-hoo! Yay! And we have our superintendent, Dr. Deana Bishop, as well as our Board Secretary, and Awesome IT in the corner. Online, I am seeing Board Member Marsete online. I will watch for the other two as they join us. But for now, we do have a forum here, and we are going to work on our agenda. The first item up is the instructional equity and anti-racism policies. If Board members remember that last week it was passed out of the Governance Committee, and one of the things that the main purpose for having it on this agenda right now is to talk about how we're going to roll it out to the community and get that community feedback and input. One of the things that we did, it's right over here, we can print it out for folks if we need to, or get it to folks, and I think it went out in email as well. So advisory group meetings for policy presentations and feedback. So I'm going off to the strategic plan, the goals and the guardrails. Oh, and I see Board Member Mitchell, thank you for joining us. If we wanted to get, you know, a lot of our, get as much community feedback as possible, you know, these were our five-year goals, we wanted to know, you know, where people were at. And I'm kind of approaching this one the same way. We know that there's a lot of emotion and a lot of concern or questions, and it's just going to take talking. It's going to take two-way communication in a lot of cases, not just the listening of public testimony. And so what I want to do is, everybody that has this spreadsheet with these groups, and I want to try and work to assign and have people step up that are comfortable to take some of these presentations, so that we can go out and just, we go, kind of like the same thing as the strategic planning, we don't want to take up a lot of time. You know, a five-minute presentation, maybe a 10-minute Q and A, but we don't want to hijack their agenda, but just make sure we're communicating. And then the other component at the bottom of it, there is about a week's worth of dates to hold, one or two dates for a town hall, or two town halls, the same way we did before. You know, to spread things out, I was thinking Thursday, the 25th, and Tuesday, the 30th, because that gave people, you know, a little bit of time in between if they couldn't make one or the other, a Tuesday or Thursday. But open to ideas?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Where is the spreadsheet? I don't see it. Was it emailed to us?
It was, I'm going to send it out again to those three.
Okay, Katie's going to send it out again. I believe it went out on Friday, I think, when the board packed it.
I apologize.
And so, looking for volunteers. And then the MECAP Policy Committee, we got feedback from Sonia. She's going to schedule another meeting in March, but we don't have that day yet. And so as soon as we have that, we'll stick that on here for a March date as well. And then, take this month, or, you know, take these dates to get out to these committees and more beyond this, you know, community councils, all that kind of stuff, where we let people know what our town halls are, all of this kind of stuff for this two-way communication that we're going for. And then get it on the non-action agenda for, let's see, about three, two, three, 16, four, six, and four 20. My original thought was four, six for non-action and four 20 for action, just based on where the town halls were. I want to give us the opportunity to hear from everybody and get the feedback. If there are any changes that we want to sit down as a board, so like on the sixth, you know, to vote that whole work session towards this, what did we hear? Did we hear anything that would make us, you know, need to tweak something or overhaul something, or whatever it is? But take that opportunity right then and there at the work session while it's on non-action, you know, also, to make those changes. It may come out that we just needed to have a conversation and things are okay, but we just don't know until we, you know, get down that path. And so I'm trying to make sure that we allow for the community input and the dialogue. And I see Member Holman online, thank you for joining us, in that we have that time as a board to just follow up on that and make sure it goes through our process, you know, of non-action and action. So I'm looking for board feedback on what people think of that plan, the timeline. Am I including everybody, you know, that we can think of? Knowing that there's probably a bunch of groups on here not on here, like our community councils and several others, but, yeah, that we can reach out to, and we can expand this list and just make sure we're all working together to get out there and present the policies out there. Member Hildy, you have your hand raised?
I guess my one priority for it is that it's just a really a two-way conversation, where it's not just either people talking at us or us talking at people, but two-way.
Yeah, I understand that. And that'd be part of the town hall would be some of that two-way dialogue. And then obviously, at some of the meetings, it just depends on how it's set up, you know, people, you know, five to present, 10-minute for Q and A, for those who are comfortably answering questions, you know, something like that.
So do you want us to pair up or just go as individuals? How do you want, how do you see that?
I don't have the schedule.
Here, I think there's, here, there we go. Teams again, pass around. You know, I think maybe pairing up in teams is always fun, but if we only happen to have one person on one day, then as long as we're getting out there.
So you guys are talking amongst yourselves and you're not paying attention to our hands raised.
I see Deana Mitchell's hand, and then I see yours, where hers was up before yours, because I saw that, but I saw Alicia's first, so, Deana Mitchell?
Okay, I appreciate this, and I think it's great that we are looking for community involvement. I guess it's, we haven't done it for other policies, although maybe we have an introduced brand-new policy recently. I guess I look at this and I think we do our goals and guardrails, and this is absolutely in line with what the community told us in terms of the guardrails. So I'm happy to, I mean, I'm available a lot of these dates, I'm available the, you know, I'll just put my name in there, but, you know, more communication is always better than less, but it just, I haven't seen us do this kind of outreach for policy before. I think it's great, maybe it'll set a precedent.
I agree. I think there's a lot of policies, if they're minor tweaks or something like that, they generally don't get this kind of attention. This is something different, in a lot of ways.
Actually, I remember when, Member Donley was in charge of the governance, he would, you did it quite a bit, but we didn't do Zoom, we had it in person where you just had other people who could come. What were those? I mean, I just remember a couple times having it.
Yeah, multiple issues, we held meetings.
Tim was the president at the time, so, yeah. I mean, it has been done, but I can't remember what those policies were about, but I know that was.
One was a flag salute, or the, saying the Star-Spangled Banner, wasn't it?
One was about guns in schools, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was community stuff, yeah. After the shooting, yeah, yeah.
But that didn't, but I, I'm sorry.
That's what I said, Maybe, I said, you're up next, and then Member Bellamy.
So, speaking on that, I mean, that really wasn't something we opened up to the whole community. I mean, we didn't like go out and reach out or whatever. That was just one group showing up. It wasn't a good representation of the community, nor was it going out to the community and asking for feedback. So I guess I'm a little, I don't know, puzzled by this also, although I know that this is a very popular topic, and, and maybe this'll work out, but I, I don't know. I'm going to keep my opinions to myself, but I think it would be better if we teamed up, because I think there is going to be a lot of pro and a lot of opposition on this from both sides, and it's going to be very heated conversations, it's going to be very hard conversations, and I think if we have two board members together, it will be easier to diffuse the situation if we need to.
Member Bellamy, and then Member Hildy.
So I think in terms of looking at our, reflecting on our board evaluation, one of the things, one of the areas where we are really lacking is in that two-way communication piece. So, and I guess I don't fear that the policy is going to be defeated. I just want us to, and it is going to be a tough conversation, because people don't know where we're coming from, they don't understand the terminology, and so in preparing ourselves to have the conversations, those are the pieces that we're going to have to be able to share, and try to keep our own, and I know I'm number one, keep our own emotionalism out of it, and I have been practicing that. But at the same time, I do not have a fear or a concern with talking to the community. I am already talking to people who disagree with me entirely, but we agree to disagree. I see my role and the role of the board as doing what's best for kids, all kids. And if we can share with people what that looks like, when it's not racialized, entirely racialized, and people are not left wondering, what about me? What about my child? Then I think that is where, that's what we have to do. And until we have a conversation, we don't have the opportunity. So I have already established a, I have already shared the January policy with the ELL families, and I would like to continue with that, if that's okay, because I've already had meetings with them.
Member Hildy?
I mean, I think Margot hit it on the head, but I didn't, I thought we were just like doing one forum. Is that, well, like everybody does, like a lot, but I, it's all like those meetings of people who would have, like, are probably interested in it, and then like one day community forum, or two?
That's why I'm asking everybody in the room, you know, there's a week's worth of dates, we can pick one or two, whatever we think. If we look back to the strategic planning, that first date had, you know, a good number of people that attended, but the second one, it wasn't as much, and a lot of them were kind of repeat from the one before. And so, you know, if one is what the board feels is adequate enough, knowing that we're getting out in many other areas, I'm totally good with that. I'm asking for the will of the board on this one. I'm looking for board guidance. And Star, you got your hands still up, but I don't know if it's because you saw the comment or because it didn't come down.
No, I have another comment.
Go ahead.
So my question is, regardless of the input we get from the community, we're passing this, these policies as is, or are we willing to change them based on the community input?
So, as they are right now, this is what we're going out to present to the community. When we come back at the first meeting that we say it's going to hit non-action, the work session right before it, we will, you know, have a board discussion and say, what did we hear? And is there anything we want to change or modify or keep as is, or what do we want to do? That's where we'll come back as a collective and say, this is all the feedback that we got, now what?
That's a process.
I just want to make sure that when we go out to the community, that we have that message clear.
What message clear?
The message of either we're going to change it or we're going to leave it as is, depending on the feedback we get.
I don't think there's any point going out to ask the community what they think if we have zero intention on being willing or open to changing it based on our feedback.
It's really improper to talk about that this is already a done deal, when it hasn't even come before the board yet. I mean, this is a proposal from a committee. The board has not voted on this, the board has not endorsed this, so to even talk about saying, well, we're not going to make any changes to this, is completely inappropriate.
She's looking for clarification.
I think the policy still stays draft.
It's a draft proposal that came from the Governance Committee, yeah.
Yeah. No, and that's exactly it.
Just want to know what the message is, I just want clarification.
The message is that we have a process here, where if something's not adopted by the board, it is not put forward as a board position.
I don't think, that's my message, the message is, we're willing to listen and take back the feedback, and, and that it's not a done deal, and that possibly it can be changed based on the feedback we received, or not on the feedback we received.
Well, I think, yeah, I mean, there's a lot of different ways to handle it. Member Bellamy?
Yeah, and I also think when we have a conversation, you know, because we don't even, the ARs have not been, not that the community can have any input into that, but certainly when we hear what they're saying, that could drive some of the actionable items that might relate to the policies, or if they could provide insight into things we may have missed or might need to rethink. So I'm not, I think the process is an important process, and I just think that, I appreciate the question, Member Marsete, because I think when we do go out, it has to be clear to people what our intent is. And so, so yeah, I just think that there's so much value in having the conversation.
All right, Member Donley, how's your hand raised?
I think it's very parallel to a bill that's come out of a legislative committee. It has not been voted by the legislative body, has not taken a position on it yet. It's a proposal that came from a committee, yeah.
Yes, I think we agree on that. Is there anybody disagreeing? Oh, yes. Yep, I see, and Member Holman, have your hand raised?
I mean, I think it's our job to be willing to change existing policy if we get feedback from the community and we agree with it. I think there's an important message for us to carry to the community, that it does look like we are going to implement an anti-racist policy, we've got a draft, we do want to hear what people have to say about it and what the reaction is. But yeah, as Member Donley said, it's just a proposal, there's no guarantee, but I think anytime we've got existing policy, proposed policy, or anything else, if we're not willing to change it based on input from the public, we're not doing what the school board has elected to do. So I do hope that is the message we carry, that we're talking about something we feel matters enough to make a change, but we're also listening to what people in the community have to say about it as well, and we're going to go forward from there.
All right, so that's the process, but I think I'm down to the last thing of one town hall or two, and is there a straw poll vote for what might be a good date or time? I got Alicia saying, you know, one, but I don't know what other people might think. Member Marsete, you have your hand raised?
Yes, I think two town halls. I know when we did it for the strategic planning, the one was very well-attended, but I think in this case, because of the subject matter, that two would be better, and schedule them on different times so people that work can attend, or maybe do them both in the evening, or one on a weekend. I know that's hard to do on the weekend, but I think two would be beneficial.
Anybody else want to hold the number of fingers up for the number of town halls you think we should do? All right, I see two there, two there. Gentlemen, Andy and Dave, you got thoughts? All right, looks like two it is. All right.
I agree with Star, though, that we need to make sure that we, you know, do one on a Saturday morning, or, you know, make it as accessible as possible.
Then I will come back with potential dates, because we didn't have a Saturday in the mix on what was possible, so I'll go with the superintendent and see what we can do. Member Bellamy?
So if it's going to push it out further, I could live without a Saturday.
Okay.
I think an afternoon.
I think, yeah, because I, I don't know that we'll get a whole, I don't know, I just think Saturdays are, we would.
Saturdays are hard to use.
It's hard for me, especially.
For an evening.
Yeah, I'm almost thinking maybe Thursday, the 25th, at 4:00 PM, but Tuesday, the 30th, maybe at 6:00 PM, so it's a little bit later. I think that prior week on the 25th, there's still community council meetings in the evenings. I think that's considered the fourth week of the month, so it had to be a bunch of seven o'clock meetings, or 6:30 or something. By the time we hit Tuesday, the 30th, I think they're all done, and so we can do a little bit later, like six, to try and catch a little bit later for folks.
Could we do a noon and a six? Maybe people get it on the lunch break, because it's going to be online.
Would you folks think about a noon, like a lunch, a lunch and learn kind of a thing?
That's a good idea, since it is virtual, it's easy for people to hop in during their lunch break. If we're in person, it's hard for them to get there, but.
Okay, so maybe the first one, the 25th is 6 to 8, and then that Tuesday, the 30th is. I was going to say, swap it, yeah, swap it, because that Tuesday, the 30th won't have any night events.
Oh, okay. Okay, so six to eight on the 25th?
On the 30th.
Oh, on the 30th, yeah. And then 12 to two.
Or 12 to one, do a little bit of a, it might be a shorter one, but maybe just within, I don't know, I don't know how many people get a two-hour lunch break.
And so can we commit to all doing presentations, at least mentioning, at our community council meetings? Most of us already have anyway. And then, I don't see, do we need to have something for teachers, or do we just, or staff, support staff? I'm just asking. Or can we just let them go through?
This is the community, well, like going through the governance process, you don't usually take the staff, you say, come as a community, and if you want to be part of the community discussion, but if Bishop, if she wanted something for her staff, then from her management side, she would get her team of employees together, however she chose.
It's just a question.
Yeah. So I think if they were wanting to do the board process, you would come to the community process. And if she had an employee process, she would do the employee process.
That's fine, I'm just asking. I see we have the students, which is great. I think we, I think, I think we have everybody, I'm just, anybody can join in on the town halls.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And then, you know, asking for those, as you guys go through this list, you know, we sent these out to the, you know, advisory group list that, you know, we had in House that there's others, you know, that might want to, you know, do the same thing, kind of like what we did before with the strategic planning. Who else can we reach out to, whether it's, you know, ABC, or AFAC, or United Way, or any of these other, you know, entities that we are routinely working with? You know, we'll just get the ideas, and we can feed them into a spreadsheet at times, and who's willing to step up and go do a quick, quick thing more.
And that's, that's good.
All right, so I think we've got that pretty well worked out, hopefully Katie took notes on that one. So next up, I wanted to vote the last 40 minutes of this to RFI's. I want to get through all of the RFI's, and if we just don't quite seem to be able to do it in five minutes or less. And so Katie's got them pulled up there, some of us have them here on paper if we need them. So here's the plan, we're going to come to the item, the person that is requesting it gets a minute to talk about why and what it's for, and then we're going to take a quick straw poll vote, and it's going to take four members to keep it on the RFI log. So four members vote and say it's good to stay on, then it stays on. When we do that, then the next step is we'll real quickly figure out what timeframe it's going to fall into, but if it doesn't get the four, then it's done, and the second part of the conversation is no longer there. But I want to see if we can work our way through this and get these all figured out. So it looks like maybe doing a quick IT thing, so hold on just a second. You're good?
Yeah.
Do you want to hear a copy? All right. So, it's the RFI's. Yeah. All right, so question number one, which is number seven, or whatever, it's on critical race theory. I believe this was put in by Member Donley about a month ago, and had 15 questions to it. So the first thing is, Member Donley, I'd like to give you about a minute to talk about where this, the interest came from, what it's going to be used for, why you want it, how the board will entirely benefit. Go.
Yeah, the superintendent reported to us last year that there were these two courses, university classes apparently, on critical race theory, that our personnel were attending in some manner or form. It wasn't clear whether it was open to the general public, or open just to university students, or that. So, and I had asked at the time to be able to go and see, you know, what these classes were like, that request was denied. So I'd really like to know more about who taught these classes, what was the content of these classes, what is the department's, I mean, the district's role in putting these classes on, or coordinating these classes? Was the, was our employees' attendance paid for by ASD? And, you know, really explore what the role of ASD was with these classes. And I think it's really important that we have an understanding of that, since these are courses that apparently were designed or targeted for our personnel, maybe they weren't, we don't know.
So this is general inquiry, but it's not going to be timed in such for like a policy or something like that immediately, but general inquiry on this specific topic. Is that a good summation for folks? All right. Wasn't going to give anybody a Q and A time for Dave to find out any other questions about it, but if you had a quick question, we can answer it. Otherwise, I'm going to ask for a straw poll vote of a thumbs up or thumbs down.
Well, can the superintendent just say if there was a?
Oh, and then how much time was involved? That's the other component before I feel like I can make a decision, is how much time, and I don't have a time component listed on this one.
Yeah, a lot of these could, I just would have to go get with the folks on the class and teaching and learning and figure this out, so most of them were yes and no questions given, so I could, you know, I mean, and then type it up and do it all done, I would say, you know, 60 minutes, finding out the information. Yeah, about an hour. Some of them I could answer myself, and some I can't.
So it looks like, you know, one to two hours is what the superintendent estimated. Member Bellamy?
So I'm just trying to understand, Member Donley, Member Donley's, is it, is it the crit, is it the, what is the issue? Is what I'm trying to understand?
The issue is, I want to fully understand what the district's role was in sponsoring or encouraging attendance at, or, you know, we don't know, it wasn't really clear from the presentation that was made to us. There seemed to be a relationship between the district and the teaching of these courses, and who attended these courses, but I'm not clear what that is, and I think that's really important to understand, whether, you know, what is the role of the district in these university classes, because it was presented to us as our employees were going to them.
And I would hope that we are not going to get involved in how we provide professional growth and individual reflective opportunities to our staff, because that's not, that's not what we're here to do. We may disagree and not read the book, or not take the class, but I don't know that we need to be involved in trying to figure out whether it's, because there's a judgment here, and I'm just trying to figure out, you know, that's just a very slippery slope for me personally.
Now, Member Marsete?
I think this has anything to do with curriculum, like we are giving our teachers or staff professional development, that they're going to go out and share with our students. Do you think as a board we need to know what that is? And I do, my question would be, why couldn't a board member attend this if they wanted to?
Well, that's question number 15, so that may come back in the answers. All right, let's do a real quick straw poll, thumbs up or thumbs down. It needs four to stay on the RFI list, and we'll see where it goes from there. So, ready, everybody? So I can only see you guys? Do more. I need Andy and Alicia, thumbs up or thumbs down.
Why are you all thinking so fast? I mean, here's like, I don't want to get into the PD, I don't want to get into PD, but if there's, if it's impacting curriculum, then I, it's like going to be taught to kids, that would be part of curriculum change or something.
So, I got four.
Oh, so my opinion doesn't matter.
These are all valid questions to ask, I'm sure the superintendent hears them. And so, all right, now the next question, as a board, we have three categories. Was it immediate, which is like, what, within a week? And then I think it's short-term, what did we define short-term as? Two to three months?
Yeah.
And then long-term, which is like six months or greater? Just a, I think that's, yeah. Anybody have any thoughts on? Anybody have any thoughts on, member Hildy and then member Mitchell?
Short, I mean, we're just trying to get schools, the summer is fine.
Okay.
It's no.
All right, member Mitchell?
Yeah, I just wanted to explain why I gave this a thumbs down, because I think that if we, I mean, obviously if this is impacting curriculum, we have the right to sit on curriculum committee meetings. We have the right to, you know, we approve that. But if it's simply wanting to approve training for teachers, I mean, I agree that it's a little troubling that we, that a board member isn't allowed to participate in that. But I have no desire to go through the entire list of things that we offer our teachers as training and decide whether the board likes what they're teaching or not.
All right, so I've had a suggestion to put it in the short term, which is like a two to three month window. Can I get a thumbs up from board members if they are okay with that categorization of time? All right, it's in the short term. Yay, we got one done. All right. Next up is.
Under five minutes.
I know, only five more to go. All right, next up is media curriculum or number eight?
Digital media.
Oh, digital slash media curriculum, okay. And this Margot requested this one, so go ahead.
And so this, this came about based on a couple of community council meetings where there were questions regarding how the safety of, you know, how, what, how are we teaching kids tech, digital literacy and safety? More on the safety side. And I do know from, I do know that we're doing that. I don't know where we're doing it in our system. What, what, what are kids getting in elementary, what are they getting in middle, and then what are they getting in high school? So that's, that's the extent of that, of the request.
Okay. And Dr. Bishop, do you have an idea on how much time something like that would take?
To look at it and write it up, an hour, hour, one to two hours, not a big deal.
All right.
Just have to go to the right people for all the curriculum reviews.
Perfect. All right, did anybody have any questions for Margot on the why? Uh, member Hildy?
Could it just not be like a email reply?
Yeah. None of these have to come back in a board meeting, they can, that would be in the board mail.
And board connect would be fine whenever. I mean, I'm, I'm.
I don't see it as like an in-depth analysis.
No, no, no.
Yeah.
Do we have curriculum, what is the curriculum and where is it taught in the store?
General.
All right, and if everybody understood all of that, thumbs up if you want to keep it on the RFI log. All right, got consensus there. Immediate, short or long term? Does anybody have a recommendation? Or Margot, where do you see it fitting, you know, for answering questions for you?
We're right in the middle of.
Short term?
Wait, wait, what is it, immediate? If not immediate.
Sure, sure. Okay, thumbs up if you guys agree that this can be a short term request.
Would be fine.
Yeah, a short term board connector response.
What's the timeframe on short term?
Like two to three months.
All right, perfect.
Done. I don't think I have no more on there.
The next one is yours, dear. Federal programs and grants.
Oh, that was a budget question, when we were struggling and getting ready for budget, but we're done.
Done with that?
So I don't, I don't need to know that now.
Next one is yours, math proficiency.
I was really hoping to capture what was easy to capture in this request and not make it really complicated. I failed to do that, way I phrased this. I guess I said as much information as possible. What I mean is practical, you know, that, I'm really not trying to do a giant project here. But I really want to understand how are, what's happened with our math scores over the last couple of decades, to get a sense of it, you know? So we can see what the impact of the curriculum that we've adopted over the last 12 to 14 years has impacted our, our math scores.
I think there was a response from administration.
Yeah, no, it's, and if you guys are able to read on the screen, there's a little bit of comments from administration, stuff like that.
It just shares the different tests.
Yeah, yeah, the estimated time is a minimum of two weeks, there isn't quite a maximum yet.
If I narrowed it down to just what it says is available, the NAEP results can be provided back to 1996. I mean, those are easily accessible, that would be helpful.
Yeah, it'll be statewide because not Anchorage.
And so we don't keep our own database of our own scores back?
We, we do, they're just all in different places because they're not all reported the same way. So that's not like, here's math and all the statewide, because the state testing keeps changing.
Yeah.
And so the different things keep changing. So we would just pull here, pull here, try to align the ones that have similar content and standards and then not. But like Nate will share like Alaska, you know, how, what's happened, but not individually for Anchorage.
Yeah. You know, it really seems like it's something we ought to be doing, is be able to look back over the last 20 years and see how our district is doing. You know, because that's a very strong correlation, I would suppose, with what kind of curriculum we're using and how, you know, how our, our teaching is being effective or not.
All right, so I've got member Mitchell, member Hildy, member Melanie. Dina, go ahead.
So I'm just wondering, so everyday math was adopted in 1996, is that correct?
That's about right, I would say.
I don't know.
So, and what, what Dave is trying to figure out is, did it make sense? How effective was everyday math? Is that what you're trying to figure out, Dave?
Well, yeah, I would like to see where we were at back when we went down this road.
So, yeah, 96 is a long time back. I don't, I don't know, I mean, I don't know how many people in the district were here then, but I guess, you know, there was probably some evaluation made at some point when we adopted everyday math to assess whether it was a good move or not. Is there any way to just, is there like a report that was created that we pull out that might address Dave's concerns?
Just reading, if you see the, the response there, Dina?
Yeah, 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 but I'm, I'm just wondering.
The standard change, so like for, for those of us that actually study data and you come up with a understanding of like, an assumption, that it would be difficult that for us to publicize an assumption about something, like we could just give raw scores and look up the different tests, like the SBA. But if anybody knows testing, the SBA was a lot easier than the APP. You know, the standards changed in between those two things. So like just to compare it and go, wow, but the, the level of ability of APP, like SBA was just an easier test.
I'm just wondering, would it be possible, would it be possible, Dave, would, I mean, if we, it says 2008 review and renewal of everyday math. There must have been some kind of assessment made at that point in time. If that, if we still have access to that review and renewal, maybe that would provide the input, the, the information that Dave's looking for. I don't know. I mean, I hear what you're saying, Dr. Bishop, I read it and, yeah.
All right.
Oh, I mean, I completely agree with Dave that it, and I hear this from our community, they'll say, oh, we were better back before. And I'm like, well, we're comparing apples and oranges, but the need to communicate is still a challenge. Like, so the data is not, it's just not there. We don't have data longitudinally. But I still need a way to talk about it that like helps our community understand.
We can come up with something, it's just that the, we have the data. But comparable. We have longitudinal data, it's just not comparable.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, that's not longitudinal, that's.
We could just give you like the different indicators, standards changed here, tests changed here, standards increased by whatever.
No. Is that even false? Well, I would look at ACT, SAT and NAP. That's what I would do.
And that's, that's the only thing I was gonna offer, is that the data is not gonna be apples to apples or it's gonna be like, like apples and grapefruit. So we just have to make sure that, I mean, because the tests, the measurements, the tools that we use to measure changed.
And more so the standards changed.
And the standards changed, yes.
What you were supposed to learn changed.
Member Marseth?
So I don't understand why we're going backwards. I mean, I think our goal is to move forward and to look at the data now and how our kids are doing. We're not gonna go back and, and use those programs. I'm assuming that they have been, you know, we move forward for a reason and, and maybe there's reports on those. But I, I, I don't understand the need for this, so maybe I'm missing something.
All right, so as is, I don't think I'm getting a lot of, you know, good happy feelings about it, but there may be some ways to tweak it. You know, to say either these three tests for this timeframe or something like that. If we can narrow that down right here and right now, great. If we need to have member Donley come back with a revised request after hearing this conversation, we can tackle it in two weeks. Which should only take a couple of minutes at that point, because we'll be pros at having this process down. Member Hildy?
I would say like if we're saying what are our goals, when we're looking at our goals, we're looking at like the past three years. And what, like member Marseth said, where are we going? Are we on track to get there? That's really what I care about. Today, are we on track to get where we need to go? So I don't, I'm not sure that this is quite that. And I don't know about a report, but certainly we do go back, like if we want to know what, I would look into an assessment and not just an overall score, but we would say numeration, where were we on numeration in all of these things? So we, I mean, but that's what we do it for, to be able to change. But I don't know how much value that would be to you, like where were we? I mean, technically, we do use the past to help us influence the future, because you have to know where kids are to be able to teach, to go. But, but like the way that this is like asking, like what's the, that's what we want to know, what's the question to ask? But do we use prior data? Absolutely, because we want to know where was it? And in, and in whom's classroom? And in what school did they get this? Like these kids sort of got this, why didn't these kids? And then we go back and like study, you know, just, so I, I get that, but if, like, so, but I don't know like what it is that we can answer for you. And then we could try to figure out what's the best data to give you for your questions. I just don't know what the question is, so, because we, we could look at it if we knew that, like, because honestly, we do look at past data. Yeah.
All right, so Dave, you want to put this to a vote right now?
Well, I'd just narrow it down to the timeline of the NAEP results back to 96.
NAEP results back to 96?
Because you can extrapolate that Anchorage is gonna be close to that, it's not gonna be the same. I mean, if we discover as the common knowledge out there is that our test scores were in the 60th percentile nationally 20 years ago, then something's gone wrong over the last 20 years.
You are correct, that Anchorage results, like the last two years on our statewide test, it mirrors and NAP. I mean, so it, it like, even though that's everybody, it doesn't say which school, which anything, it's everybody. Our Anchorage as a whole does mirror NAP, to your first thought, at least the last couple of years it has.
So that is something that's much more easy to capture.
Sure.
That's what I would narrow this request.
Yep, I'll get that. That one is.
All right, so the revised request is NAP back to 96. Number Holman, you have your hand raised? Yeah, 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 did you have a comment?
What was that? I'm in middle school.
Can't hear you. You're talking, but I can't hear you. All right, so it's been revised, it's NAP to 96, one to two hours max. Those that want to keep that on the RFI log, thumbs up or thumbs down?
We're voting on NAP scores back to 96?
Yep.
How hard is that to get, Dr. Bishop?
Simple.
Simple.
And I, yeah.
Okay, all right, four says it goes now.
I can Google it right now.
Okay, so do we? Can we just do short term just to get it done? Okay.
You mean immediate or short term?
Well, it's just short term and if she gets it, she puts it out. Everybody okay with short term? Which is the two to three months? Okay, good. And she's like, are you on it? Okay. Okay, Andy, you're up. Number 13, calibrate race within economically disadvantaged. Or was this already done, Dr.?
No.
Oh, okay. Okay, so this was requested by member Holman at the 216 meeting. Andy, if you want to go ahead and talk to it or speak to it?
Um, just that, I, I think at times we kind of equate socio-economically disadvantaged with people of color. But actually to look at the distribution of races and ethnicities through all of our categories, not specifically economically disadvantaged, but that would be one of them. Just so we kind of have an idea of how diverse all of our various groups are. I, I couldn't tell you the percentage of our students that are of different ethnicities. There's say economically advantaged or disadvantaged. That would have been my thinking when, when I posed the question.
So, all right, just from my understanding, because I know we look at data in races and then we look at it in the student groups and you just want to see the student groups. So say there's 500 kids in free reduced lunch, you want to see the ethnic breakdown of them? Of those 500, is that a correct generalization?
I think, I think so. Yeah.
I can't tell, but yes or no?
He said yes.
Okay. So. Okay. Okay, I, I thought that's what I understood. And the three student groups being the economically disadvantaged, the free reduced lunch and the sped counts, the three that we break them out for the recording that we're doing?
These are free and reduced.
Those are the three that we usually, are those the three that we tag?
ELO.
Yeah. Or is it ELO?
ELO.
All right. And so Andy, if I understand, you want this for the at-home secondary marks presentation. It's specific to the last presentation that we just got, correct? Okay, does everybody understand member Holman's request? And do they have any questions to better understand the what, the why?
What's the time?
We haven't got that far yet. Make sure we understand it. Member Mitchell? And then, and then we'll vote on it, yeah.
I was gonna ask what the, what the investment of time was.
I mean, so here's the thing. We can do this work and, and the, so with like the whole time thing is, like, I get it why it was put on there. But the, the issue is, is that the, something else isn't getting done and the something else is the board goals and guardrails that you already gave us. So that, that's the point. So when, when we pull our assessment team and say, don't do all this, do this, what you already asked for isn't getting done. So I don't want it to seem like, oh, it's gonna take me months, because it doesn't. Like if somebody sat down and that was their job and they're gonna get this, they can probably punch out a nice little report in a couple of days, two, three days. But the thing is, is they're not doing anything else that were already requested, not only by this board, but by the entire district, because the assessment group is about four people. And so schools request things and everything. So I mean, I, I want to be fair that when we say, you know, the time, it doesn't mean that it can be done tomorrow. It just means that it's gonna fit in with everything else and opportunity costs. So when something is requested here, what, what we want to know is that it really is gonna help you with a decision you make. Because if we're working just to give board members jobs and then we are behind in everything else and not reaching your goals and I'm held accountable for the goals, that's what I'm saying, what do you want me to do? Where, where do you want me to put my things? So we could do this and, you know, give, give us a week, I bet they could punch it out. I'm just thinking, I want to know, the opportunity cost is what I can't share with you right now, because I don't know what it is.
Sure.
So just so you know.
Member Hildy?
Yeah, I mean, I find not putting out there, I'm just wondering on the NAP, could we just, can you just have a week? And then be like, here's where you can find the information.
The NAP is easy, since he redid it, I'll put, yeah, I mean, that's gonna be super easy.
Like not going through it, like not forward decision, if you can, I'll give you the link, and here's where you find that information that you want. This one, can't we get this?
This one, can't we get this in our data dashboard? Like doesn't?
Probably not as detailed as I think. What, what was, oh, the. Yeah, you could get the marks.
At the at home.
And by ethnicity.
Yeah. And, and you could do two or three things. You could say girls who are SES, who are African American. You could pick those three, but it's the report that puts them all side by side is what I think.
That's the thing. Yeah.
But there are a few things that would have them side by side that, yeah. Yeah, I mean, it can be done. I just want, like, everything can be done because our people are good and they know how to do it. It's just that what aren't they doing? And if this is of high importance for the board, we want to get it done. But I also know that your goals and guardrails and all that is high important, so.
All right. Member Mitchell, you have your hand raised? I can't tell if it was left over and just not put it down if there's a follow up question.
Nope, it is raised again. So I, it sounds like, I mean, I kind of had member Hildy's reaction that it doesn't seem like this would be hard to get, but I, I'm getting the sense from what Dr. Bishop is saying is that all of the things we've looked at so far aren't individually that difficult, but we're starting to pile on a lot of stuff. So I wonder if A, Andy can take a look at this and say, what would be a, a quick thing to pull from the dashboard that would get at what I'm trying to get at? And then maybe we do need to go back and look at everything and say, okay, each individual, one of these last five things we requested isn't a big deal, but it's starting to pile on and maybe we just prioritize them, the bottom two drop off or something. I, is that the sense I'm getting, Dr. Bishop?
And, you know, these, this is something that when we pull future data and do our outcome monitoring, I will know to like look at that then. You know, I, y'all know, ELL and sped are already in disproportionality reports that we have to make. They're just a report to the state about this. That's a whole separate report. We literally have to report on SES and kids in sped and, and different demographic. I mean, that is an official federal report that you have to do. So we, the data are all there, you know? So I will know in the future, like, okay, when, when we're asking for grades, I'll know like, oh, let's let the board know how many kids, where our demographics are in these three categories. So like for the future, we'll do it, but just, it's going to be work, but now I can change how we do reports in the future if that's something you'd like. So that's what I would prefer to do is that when we do future reports, you would like to know which kids make up poverty, which kids make up ELL, which kids like, I mean, and we could break it down more that way, but to.
Okay. Member Hildy?
I thought that was what Andy was requesting.
He's requesting for one specific thing and.
Yeah.
A report from 216.
Oh, I understood it just as going forward.
No. He said on the report that I already did, he wanted.
I call it going, I mean, the more information on reports going forward that you think is helpful.
Well, now, now that I know that this is of interest, I mean, we, we could design the reports around that. But if you want me to go back and do this one, then I could. Ask our people to do it.
Andy, got your hand raised?
Yes. I was just going to say, I remember asking about this as sort of like a way to help me think about some of the data we were seeing. So reporting in the timeframe that Dr. Bishop's talking about certainly satisfies my need for it. If none of the other board members have a burning desire, I'm happy to withdraw it and just wait for the next round of reports on it.
I've seen a lot of head nodding, thinking that's a, a good plan and thumbs up all around. So thank you for that, Andy. And look at that, it is 4:55. We got through all of our RFIs to date. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Sometimes this is just what we need to do is just build ourselves a time to get it done. The next thing up on the agenda is new business. And I want to turn this over to Board Member Bellamy because she had started a conversation and wanted to make sure it was a board, brought up to the whole board as well. So.
Correct. Yeah. Thank you. My only, I just wanted to make sure that, or requests or involve the boards thinking around naming a school after Dr. Affeldra Davis. And I know we have a process and that process is in policy. And so I just wanted to make sure that we were, I wanted to see what the board felt about that.
Okay. Member Hildy?
I, I was frustrated when we did Benny Davis renaming because it was not quite how our policy was set up, that we picked a person instead of like casting a wide net and saying, who is a community do we want? I support Benny Davis. Right? I'm not pushing back. But going forward, I would, one, I would like want a building that wants to be renamed. And right now I'm afraid I'm going to have fewer buildings, but maybe that'll be an opportunity. So that would maybe, maybe two schools get consolidated. I don't want to throw that out there, but they might want a new name. But I wouldn't want to say we just picked a person without like considering, like maybe there's more people. And, and she sounds fabulous. Like there's no doubt in my mind that I would love to go get her school one. But I don't know if that's fair to, like, I've had people in the Alaska Native community say, why, why did it go to Benny Davis? Why didn't, I have a person over here that I think is an excellent role model. And so for me, it gets back to that process part.
And I think we need to encourage people who have those thoughts and needs to, to bring those requests forward. But the process is in policy and it's not really, I mean, it's the process is, but it's, it's through the superintendent's team. And I, but I just wanted to, I had asked for an update. And so before we get an update, we need to have some board, board needs to know about what's going on. So, or I'd like to hear from the board what your thoughts are. So I appreciate that, member Hildy.
Yep. Uh, member Donley, you have your hand raised?
Yeah. I, I'd like to see it addressed in a way, and, and I haven't read the policy in quite a while, where the board says, these are names that we would welcome interest about going, having schools named to. If there are individual schools out there have an interest in that, then they come and say, hey, we like, we, we kind of would like to be called the Abraham Lincoln Elementary School. And, and so that they would come through the name rather than the name going to them.
Exactly. I think, yeah, I think that's what our policy really provides. I mean, it doesn't say you can't do that. And so groups of people or individual, you know, groups can't come forward. And the last, yeah, the last one did come from the city because that we, the city decided they could not make a decision for the ASD. And that's how it got back to ASD. So, yeah.
So then they narrowed it down to what they wanted.
Maybe it's true.
Yeah. And they didn't want them to let us participate.
Yeah, they weren't, they were.
We weren't allowed to participate when I asked too. So it was kind of funky with that.
So for those, word policy, it's 7511, naming of a facility. And so I know that there's been conversations, you know, at the superintendent level already, I think from the family, you know, stuff like that. And so I, I know that there's a little bit of stuff that's been kind of moving forward, kind of behind the scenes. And by all intent, this, you know, policy does talk about it being in the super, superintendent's, you know, purview to do that. I think what we came up against last time was the renaming of a facility. And we haven't gone back and looked at this policy and to look if we want a different set of, you know, ARs for a renaming as opposed to a freshly new naming. And I don't know if that, if we're skipping a step or, you know, if that's a part of the conversation. Dr. Bishop?
Just to give you an update, we, really, we went back to the school because there was a, the, the family had called and requested. So we just went back to the school. But my recommendation, you know, so we, we've started kind of just to ask them, what do you think? To ask the school like, like you suggested. But I don't know if you, like, I read in, I think, the National School Board, you know, the newsletter that there was some pushback on school boards that spent their time renaming schools and doing all these things rather than getting kids in school. And so I would say that the school there was interested, but it was like, we're, we're like getting our kids back. We're watching COVID all the time. We're doing this and we're not getting, like, they didn't have the process that they would want. So that I think what, what they want to do is to bring it forward to us at a, at a later time because right now it's about, just, I mean, I, every day is like a 10 hour day just getting through COVID for staff and other people. So, but we did start it because we had it about, it's about a month ago now. And I said, hey, and it had come up with the Betty Davis that, oh, that's great. And so we just put it back to the school. She said, sure, I'll talk to staff, I'll do whatever. But it was just, there was no timeline just because it was just something else to do right now. So it most likely will come back to the board and, or back to me and then we'll start the process. But it probably won't, I can't imagine it being the last quarter of school. I have a feeling that they'll start to work with community and then move it into the future. So would, would be mine, but they were interested.
Member Hildy?
Just from like a fairness perspective, like I'm always worried about who doesn't like know that they could just call the superintendent up and say, this person I love and is a great person died at like a building in Dr.? Is that the process I should?
It's in policy. Some people do. But it's kind of.
It usually, we haven't got, we have not gone back to evaluate our policy for a secondary AR for renaming of a school. This is where we had issues last time. We have taken that pause to read this.
Yeah.
Right. That's a naming of a first time.
This is a first time naming is really what this.
That's true.
Policy.
Yeah.
And so I think maybe while fourth quarter is, is doing its thing, I think, you know, if governance wants to take up a renaming policy or a conversation, I, I'm not suggesting, not that I'm saying.
Let's look at it and see if we can look at it.
But here's what I know. It is 502. Member Donley, you did the last comment.
I was just saying that a, a possible policy might be that the board, if there's, you know, interest, could adopt a list of names that the board would, would find appropriate. Or, and they could maintain that list. And then any individual school that had an interest in any of those names could say, hey, board, we would like to become such and such.
It could be that. And there's, and there's an idea, an idea. So, all right. It is 503 now, and we do have a executive session. And so I would entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of personnel superintendent.
Okay. I'm going that we go like to executive session for the purpose of personnel matters.
Second. Thank you. All right. And Katie, do we stay on this one or?
Differently.
All right. Thank you, guys. Work session is adjourned and we'll see those that are supposed to be on the executive session.